I'd like to welcome everybody to the Delaware County Commissioners Meeting. It's Monday December 1st, 2015. The time is 9:00 a.m. Do you please stand for the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Denise, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bledsoe.
Here.
Ms. Riggin.
Present.
Mr. King.
Here.
Ms. Brest.
Present.
And Mr. Murphy.
Here.
Steve.
Next order of business, we have a public hearing regulating movement of vehicles on certain streets in Delaware County. Ordinance is going to be under first reading today and it's to establish speed limits, limitations in only acres located in center township, County Road 900 North located in Union Township, County Road 400 North located in Harrison Township, Gregory Road located in Union and Niles Township.
We've covered all the roads. Thank you. These are just based off requests from the public. The first one for LA Acres, we received a petition. Twelve of the 13 residents requested a 10 mile per hour speed limitation. And we did a traffic study and based on the curves and stuff, we do feel like that qualifies as a 10 mile an hour. The other locations are just, we received requests of post speed limit signs and we don't have a set ordinance for.
Okay. Do we have anybody from the public that would like to get up and speak?
Angie, once you do this, do you kind of let the sheriff, call the sheriff department and tell them to check them or how do you do this? I mean this does.
It'll go through two readings. If you, if the commissioners approve this ordinance, it will be published in the newspaper. But I'm happy to pass it on to the sheriff's office as well. We'll issue a work order and install the signs. Thank you.
Do we have anybody from the public interfering in motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Second.
Have motion of second, close the public hearing. Denise, can you call the roll?
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Riggin.
Yes.
And Mr. King.
Yes. Next, we need approval of November 17th minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second. Denise, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Riggin.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Move on to presentations to the commissioners before we start with Mounds and the Greenway Project. I'd just like to state that Larry's been an honor, a privilege to sit up here with you. You've been a mentor for me for the last couple of years and I really appreciate everything that you've done. I'm sure we have some employees that would like to sit up here, you know, give little stories and stuff about you. We've got a plaque. From 2007, 2014, Larry Bledsoe Jr., District 3 Commissioner, Delaware County Commissioners. We'd like to honor you with this plaque, please.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure. It's been a pleasure and it's amazing how much just three or four weeks will take the stress load off of you. Shannon, I wish you well. If I could ever be of any assistance to anybody, you know how to get me, get ahold of me. This is a great community. I look to going back to volunteering. I've got several things in the works and came from volunteering, going back to volunteering and who knows what I'll do in a couple of years. So again, I appreciate it. It's been a great ride and I'm looking for, to do other things. So thanks again.
Appreciate it. I've only been here 23 months, but I appreciate Larry's service. We haven't always agreed and had some, you know, little bickering, but he's a good man and we're going to miss him.
Appreciate that.
Any other employees like to say anything? You can.
Larry, it's been fun.
It's been great.
We came in it together. We'll go after it.
That's right. We're retired, Judy.
We are going to retire.
I appreciate Larry and for the service that he's given. He works very hard and many a nights he worked late. And what I was impressed with Larry when he came into office, he studied everything that he knew would be presented and he had an open door policy. If we needed him to assist us or ask any questions, he always was there. We'd text, we'd call him, he'd always return. And he always respected the employees of Delaware County and, and we were always able to, you know, ask him questions and he'd help us and try to make us better in our jobs. So I thank Larry and I wish him nothing but the best.
Appreciate that.
Thanks for covering all three. Thank you, Larry.
Then we'll move on to the Mounds Greenway Project, Heart of the River.
Good morning, Commissioners, staff, and newly elected Commissioners. You're going to have to be by a microphone. Oh, I'm sorry. There's one right over there. Oh. I'll try and make this brief. I'm Cheryl Myers from Anderson, Indiana. I've been with Heart of the River since it first formed last year around March after the first release of information about the proposed green, the proposed reservoir. On your desk, you have a folder that includes a personal letter from me, some literature that we have handed out at public venues, a very important piece of writing by Tony Fleming, who is a hydrogeologist. He presented at our first panel discussion and you will find some very sound objections to the way the reservoir has been presented. There's a letter there also from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service written to DLZ Engineering, which was hired to do a feasibility study and they're concluding phase two of that now. There's also a letter to Rob Sparks from the Environmental Protection Agency and then probably some duplication of Greenway literature that you will hear presented after me. I think there are several deal breakers and Kevin Tungusvik is going to talk about the mounds, the fenn, the nature preserve, the possibility of endangered species. I would just encourage you to really study this issue and not be mesmerized by the stardust that's going to be thrown into our eyes very shortly. The Corporation for Economic Development has over a million dollar budget to work with and part of that is going to be dedicated to promoting the dam. We encourage you to look at the science and not just the spin. Eminent domain is going to displace hundreds, maybe thousands of people before this is over, which always leaves a negative taste, I think, in people's mouths. We're going to lose, we would lose a square mile of mature forest that we cannot afford to lose in this area. Wind and wave erosion has not been accounted for when it comes to the jeopardy it places on the earthworks at Park. We have had many experts tell us $400 million is vastly underestimated, that even moving the infrastructure alone could cost that much. I think we need to take a good, hard look at whether the citizens of our two counties can afford this reservoir and if it's even needed. We have various, two very sound sources that say we don't, we won't need water. This is a water-rich state. We haven't even conducted an inventory because we have so much water. So the argument that this is needed for water, we think, is spurious. And I'm going to turn it over to Kevin. Thanks.
Hello, I'm Kevin Tungusvik. I'm an Anderson resident, 3515 South, 450 East. And I am a botanist and I am the lead author of this floral inventory of Mounds State Park. And this floral inventory documents the presence of 478 native plant species. The Floristic Quality Index, which is a method used by botanists to quantify the quality of plant community, was 96.2. To put that in perspective, anything above a 50 is considered to be of paramount importance as a natural area. This is the highest site, this is the highest value of any site inventory in east central Indiana due to the exceptional quality of the wetlands protected in Mounds Fenn Nature Preserve. And it is not possible, I've been in the restoration business, working for a native plant nursery for 20 years, it's not possible to recreate wetlands of this quality and mitigation. So it's going to be very difficult to get the permitting agencies to agree to the destruction of this, these wetlands, not only because of their quality, but because they are protected by the State Nature Preserves Act. And that act states that in order to take a state nature preserve, it has to be for another public purpose and there has to be an imperative and unavoidable public necessity. And we don't feel the rationale for this reservoir rises to that level of imperative and unavoidable public necessity. As Cheryl mentioned, it's debatable whether the water will be needed for decades. Citizens Energy, the Indianapolis Water Utility has a 25-year plan that includes no additional reservoirs. They're incrementally developing groundwater sources instead. And finally, there's endangered species impacts as indicated in your Fish and Wildlife letter and your packets. And those include the Indiana and the northern long metered bab, which is going to be listed next to April. And those endangered species impacts, this is ideal habitat for both of those species and that's going to make it very difficult from a permitting aspect through the Endangered Species Act. And finally, I would note in your EPA letter, the Section 404 permit that would be required for this requires that it violates no other laws. And I've already mentioned the State Nature Preserves Act and Endangered Species Act. So I encourage you to read the full text of that EPA letter of concern. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I would just note, this would flood one-third of Mounds State Park approximately, including the nature preserve. And the erosion of the lots would be very hazardous to the mountains over the long term.
Good morning and thank you Commissioners. My name is Tim Maloney. I'm a staff member with the Hoosier Environmental Council, a statewide, not-for-profit environmental education and advocacy organization. I want to talk to you briefly this morning about an alternative plan for the White River and Madison and Delaware Counties, an alternative to the proposed Mounds Reservoir. And this is what we call the Mounds Greenway. This morning, I'm going to quickly describe the Greenway Plan, the benefits of greenways and trails, and the advantages of the Greenway compared to the Mounds Reservoir. Just some shots of greenways from other places. This Greenway idea is not an original idea. As far back as 1979, the Indiana Department of Natural Resources looked at the recreation potential of the White River from Muncie to Martinsville. And one of their findings in this study was that the area between Muncie and Anderson in particular, along the White River, had high value as a potential protected recreation area. And our Mounds Greenway proposal largely mirrors a lot of that recommendation. Here you have a map of the proposed Greenway between Anderson and Muncie and we have another visual aid here that Doug is holding up. The concepts of the Mounds Greenway are linear park along the White River running from Anderson to Muncie. The boundaries of the Greenway would generally follow the river's floodway, which would encompass about 2,300 acres. And there would also be a trail connection included from the western limit of the Muncie Greenway to the eastern limit of the Anderson Greenway and city trails. Here is a depiction of the trails along the river in the city of Anderson and they run all the way out to the eastern edge of town to Range Line Preserve, which is where our proposed Mounds Greenway would hook up. And then looking at the trail system here in Muncie, you have the White River Greenway, which runs from downtown, also links up to the Cardinal Greenway. And when you look at the combined mileage of the trails in Muncie, the Cardinal Greenway and the trails in Anderson, along with the Mounds Greenway, you have a trail system of about 110 miles, which is, would be a very attractive trail system for trail users, bicyclists, hikers, runners. Other aspects of the Mounds Greenway would include picnic areas, additional river access sites, trailheads and parking at the Greenway Terminus and on each end, and also in Chesterfield, Daleville and Yorktown. And we're suggesting an interpretive center at the Range Line Preserve as well to educate people about the value of the White River Valley and all of the natural features and cultural features and historic features that are found there. The Greenway would protect a free-flowing White River, would protect the riparian habitats along the river, the hardwood forest and wetlands against very high-quality bottomland hardwood forest that provides great wildlife habitat that's interspersed with natural wetlands. And most of this land is undeveloped now. It would also protect Mounds State Park and the impacts to the park from the reservoir were described earlier. And would also incorporate the existing local parks along the Greenway route, not only the city parks in Anderson and Muncie, but the local parks, Wall Bridge Acres in Chesterfield, David Schella Barter Park in Daleville, and Moro's Meadows in Yorktown. Just some more shots of the river. As you can see, very natural appearing river corridor, high-quality natural habitats. Again, the Greenway would complement and make sure that the assets and natural resources of Mounds State Park remain protected, including the historic, prehistoric earthworks there. Now I'm going to talk very quickly about the benefits of greenways and trails and there are a great many benefits, beginning with the environmental and ecological benefits. Migratory corridors along rivers and other linear natural areas are a high conservation priority and we know that the White River and its habitats support great wildlife areas. Water quality, the Greenway by protecting the adjoining lands along the river helps buffer runoff that can cause water quality problems. So you get water quality benefits and the recreation activities that go along with that. And moving on to the economic benefits of greenways, and they, these economic benefits have actually been very well catalogued across the country, that very positive benefits from a variety of standpoints, outdoor recreation and tourism, enhanced property values and quality of life. And as economic development people are, and community planners are realizing, quality of life is now a key component of how people choose to, where people choose to live and work. And I quote a survey from the American Planning Association that indicates that local amenities and quality of life are at least as important or more important than traditional business improvement strategies. Let's talk about outdoor recreation and tourism. In Indiana, we have a great deal of participation in outdoor recreation. Over a million people doing trail-based recreation, 1.3 million participate in bicycling, 600,000 in non-motorized water sports, 780,000 people fish, and a million and a half people enjoy wildlife watching. And they spend hundreds of millions of dollars on their pastime. Overall, in Indiana, outdoor recreation generates over $9.4 billion a year and employs over 100,000 people, according to the Outdoor Industry Association.
Mr. Maloney, I'm sure if I catch y'all here, if you've got any remarks that you want to give.
Sure. I'll do that. Flood control is another benefit. Be happy to share information with you about the funding opportunities. Again, economic benefits, well documented in terms of revenue and visitor spending on trails around the country. If you've been to Jeffersonville, Indiana, the big four pedestrian bridge there is transforming that downtown area because of the high demand for that.
Well, thanks, Uncle.
Just let me finish up here.
I'd like you to come to finish up. We've got a meeting that we've got to continue to run.
Okay. Well, thank you for your time.
You've been a certain amount of time. I think you've actually ran over a little bit anyway, so.
Okay. Well, thank you for your time and I hope you'll take a hard look at the Greenway proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to contracts, agreements for approval. First contract will be with Weber Office Equipment.
Yeah, this is the Weber office. They continue to service our copy and maintenance machines, cargo packages and maintenance. They do a great job. About seven years ago now, they replaced all the copy machines and starting this year, last year's budget going into this year, we were able to not only use this contract and have them continue on with the maintenance, but allow us to have a little bit of money to replace three or maybe four machines based on the copy counts. So we get some of those two or three million copy machine counts down and then replace as we go and try to rotate these machines out a couple of years, a couple every year. So it's a good program.
Good service.
I do want to remind everybody, I had forgot the Sheriff Squadron needs one, one of the hand-me-downs.
I'm sure we planned it.
Yeah. That same machine was when I was reserved, so that went on a homing pigeon to bring in the homework. So I'll move for approval of this Weber contract.
Have motion of second. Do we have any discussion? Denise, call the roll, please.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Riggin.
Yes.
And Mr. King.
Next, we have emergency medical service agreement between Delaware County EMS and Indiana University Health, Baltimore Memorial Hospital. Steve, was you able to look at this?
I did look at this. My only question was, and I sent an email, the version I had did not have any language in paragraph four under compensation. So I don't know if that has been filled in, but I have not seen anything with the completed version of that contract and that's kind of critical.
Do you know anything? There's no compensation either way.
You probably should see that.
And I definitely can't disagree. The only other thing I had seen with it is on appendix B, it was like a diagram or a blueprint of the area that we are to take possession of and there was no diagram or blueprint there.
Correct.
You know, we've been working on this thing literally for over a year now from the time of its inception or its concept. We've been working on this contract for about the last month and a half. Everything is in place as far as their facilities, our equipment, everything is just kind of standing by idling, waiting to get this contract signed. I would love to get this done today if there's any way we could do that.
What I may suggest is that you. Otherwise, the contract is fine and maybe we could prove it subject to completion of the language in paragraph four and the inclusion of that exhibit, which I'd be happy to review.
Okay. I'll make my motion, please. For approval. Have motion of second. Do we have any discussion? Denise, call the roll, please.
Ms. Riggin.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
And Mr. King.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're here. Next, we have United Consulting Supplemental Agreement.
This supplemental is for the new Bell Road construction project. This is for Right-Away Illinois Position Services. This wasn't a contract and is necessary to continue this project moving forward. The additional cost is $13,150.
Please be done. So I'll move for approval of this United Consulting Supplemental Agreement.
Second.
Have motion of second. Do we have any further discussion? Denise, call the roll, please.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Riggin.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Next, we have extending agreement to provide management services for juvenile service center. Move on.
Okay, this is a proposal to extend the existing agreement between the Youth Opportunity Center and the County for the Juvenile Detention Center, which has been a longstanding project in Delaware County. Juvenile detention centers located on land that's owned in part by the county, in part by the YSC. Rick Rory and David Dickerson are here if you have any questions. This would just extend the existing agreement for two years.
I know Commissioner Riggin has made mention of them looking into this and working on. Sure, you have.
I just, I appreciate David coming today to look at this because they did hold the price the same and we appreciate that.
You do get a preferential rate from, and there's no other place for these kids to go other than out of county at considerable expense.
David, you want to fill in on the J program? You're also active in that. Someday that might reduce our detention.
Well, I'm not sure. I want to take up all the Commissioners' time with this and maybe.
That's the goal, is to get these kids back.
There is a juvenile justice reform initiative going on in Delaware County right now. Judge Dowling is spearheading that. And the idea behind that is just to take a look at kids and alternatives and make sure the right kids are in detention for the right reasons. And yes, I could ask them to pack down the road.
I move that we.
Approve agreement.
As presented.
I'll second. Have motion of second. Do we have any other discussion? Denise, call the roll, please.
Ms. Riggin.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes. Thank you.
So that'll do it for contracts, agreements. We have no appointments, no table of business. I seen this morning, we had an ordinance for second reading.
Yeah. Is it 2014-029?
2014-029.
It's on our agenda. It's the.
It's for the Delaware County Emergency Medical Service, MedStat Off-Road Vehicle. I thought we suspended the rules.
No, we suspended the rules on that.
We suspended the rules on that.
I would say. Yeah. It's not up there.
Steve, didn't we, I'm pretty sure we did.
Yeah, we did suspend the rules. We actually already placed an order.
We were in charge for suspending the rules.
We'll move on to ordinances for first reading. First one will be ordinance 2014-036 to amend an ordinance regulating traffic for certain public streets in Delaware County. I'll move for introduction of 2014-036.
Second.
Have motion of second. Do we have any discussion? Denise, call the roll, please.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Riggin.
Yes.
And Mr. King.
Yes.
Next, we was going to do ordinance for 2014-037, ordinance establishing Delaware County Unity Capital Development Fund. I believe we're going to hold off on that until after the first of the year. So we'll just go ahead and strike that one from the meeting. And we'll move on to 2014, 2014-038. Will that be 37 now?
No, let's just go on and avoid that.
Okay.
Because I've already got it.
Okay. The Delaware County Emergency Management Agency Performance Grant Committee Program.
This is the grant the state awarded us, $8,485.28 based on our performance of 2013. We were the top 10 in the state. We've taken this and went through our budget and seen kind of our shortfalls in equipment we need that we couldn't afford through our regular county-based budget, submitted the budget to the state. They've approved it. So if you guys will approve this grant and then if you could suspend the rules to it, we can go ahead and send it back to the state for fully execution status.
I'll move for introduction of 2014-038.
Second.
Have motion for introduction in a second. Any further discussion? Denise, call the roll, please.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Riggin.
Yes.
And Mr. King.
Yes.
I'll move for suspension of the rules of 2014-038.
37. Is it? No, it's 38.
38.
I'll stick it down.
We have a motion of second to suspend the rules on 2014-038. Denise, call the roll, please.
Ms. Riggin.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Thank you.
Yes. I'll move for approval of 2014-038.
Second.
Have motion to approval in a second of 2014-038. Denise, call the roll, please.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Riggin.
Yes.
And Mr. King.
Yes.
We will move on to resolutions for approval. Mr. Bookout, Denise, do you have a number?
Yes.
Yes.
And Mr. King?
Yes.
We will move on to resolutions for approval. Mr. Bookout, Denise, do you have a number?
Yes. 2014-048.
Commissioners, good morning.
Good morning.
What's before you is a resolution from the Delaware County Redevelopment Commission approving an amendment to the TIF plan for the town of Daleville. This will allow for the Delaware County Redevelopment Commission to continue with the master plan that was completed in cooperation with the Daleville Town Board. This has been approved by the Delaware County Plan Commission and also the Delaware County Redevelopment Commission, so I'm happy to answer questions. I appreciate your support.
I have a question on page three, item three, the appraisal of fair market value of the first property listed in Exhibit A. What does it mean by first property listed?
The first property is the first property to be acquired in the downtown plan. That's on the southeast corner of Walnut and Main Street.
So, they don't have to appraise the other ones?
No, they do. They do. Yeah, yeah. They will all be appraised. Yes, yeah. The Delaware County Redevelopment Commission is required to get two appraisals on each property and cannot pay more than the average of the two appraisals. So, we're set out in state law that we cannot pay more than appraisal value for those properties.
And the estimated cost for the $500,000...
Yeah, that's a broad cost. We don't know how much all the properties will cost in sum because they haven't been negotiated yet, but we believe that that'll be like a top-end figure that we would not exceed.
And then, for the record, the estimated cost of $15 million is like a two, three-year plan or...
Yeah, really like a 10-year plan. Yeah, yeah. We're just concentrating on years one and two at this time.
Have motion in a second to Resolution 2014-048. Discussion? Denise Colwell, please.
Mr. Bloodsow?
Yes.
Ms. Rigan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
That will do it for resolutions for approval. We'll move on to Department Heads and Elected Officials. We have the 2015 Commissioners' Meetings in front of us to approve.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Have motion for approval in a second. Do we have any discussion? Denise, can you call the role, please?
Ms. Rigan?
Yes.
Mr. Bloodsow?
Yes.
And Mr. King?
Yes.
Do you have anything else from any other Department Heads or any elected officials? Local reports, we've received them from Ways and Mayors, and also from the Department of Service Force. Move down payment claims, amount of $1,560,158.76.
Move for payment.
Second.
Have motion and a second for approval. Discussion over the claims. Denise Colwell, please.
Ms. Rigan?
Yes.
Mr. Bloodsow?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
We will move down questions, comments from the public. Then I'll entertain a motion to reset. Have motion in a second. Denise Colwell, please.
Mr. Bloodsow?
Yes.
Ms. Rigan?
Yes.
And Mr. King?
Yes.
Go on, reset.